It is 5:30. I'll call the meeting to order and ask everyone to please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Give everyone a few seconds to give a final review to the consent agenda items. We all received them in email, so hopefully you had time to review them carefully. And we'll move on to approve the meeting agenda for tonight. We'll need a motion to approve the July 31st, 2023 organizational board meeting agenda as presented.
So moved.
Support.
Okay, motion and support. Any discussion on the agenda? Okay, hearing none. All in favor? Show of hands, please. Thank you. Okay, we need a, moving on to elect a temporary chairperson. We need a motion to elect Superintendent Rabideau as temporary chairperson until the election of the board president.
I'll offer that motion.
Support.
Motion support. Any conversation? All in favor? Show of hands, please.
Okay, item number six, election of officers. We'll start by taking nominations for the president of the school board. You have ballots in front of you.
Yep.
And so, because it's an open election, if you would put your, oh, I'm sorry. First off, any nominations for president?
Nominate Anna to remain.
All right.
I accept. Thank you.
Any other nominations? If not, that makes the next step quite easy, I believe. Being the only nominee, I think we hereby appoint you as the president of the Board of Education.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, everyone. And with that, I now turn it over to you.
Too bad next November wouldn't be that easy.
And I did have a conversation with Eric today that he is open to any nominations for himself as well, even though he is not here. So I will open the floor for nominations for the office of vice president.
I would nominate Stacy Parr.
Well, thank you. I would be happy to continue.
Thank you. Any further nominations? Okay, hearing none. Congratulations, Stacy. You will continue on as the vice president. I guess I didn't need to fill out those two. Okay, and next up, Office of Treasurer. I would offer a nomination to have Eric continue as treasurer. He did accept that over the phone today, so he seemed good with that. Any further nominations for that? Okay, well, congratulations to Dr. Lawson as continuing for the office of treasurer. And thank you, Leslie, for working on the new ballots.
We'll have it for next time.
Up next, citizens wishing to address the board. Seeing no one coming forward, we will move on to approval of consent agenda items. Quite a few of them in your packet tonight. You only have a motion for that, right?
Yes.
Yeah, it was just not listed in the packet. So need a motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented on the agenda.
So moved.
Support. Any conversation? Okay, hearing none. All in favor? Show of hands, please. Okay. Letter B, appoint board secretary for the fiscal year 2023-24. A motion to appoint Leslie Reynolds to continue as the board secretary for the 2023-2024 fiscal year.
I move to appoint Leslie Reynolds as the board secretary for the 2023-24 fiscal year.
Support. Happy to continue?
Absolutely.
Thank you for all that you do. Congratulations. All in favor? Show of hands. Thank you, Leslie. All right. Up next, M A S B conferences, academies, workshops, and CBA classes. Policy 0175-1 requires board approval when attending a conference workshop outside of the local E S D service area. A motion to approve attendance of board members to M A S B conferences, academies, workshops, and applicable CBA classes in Michigan.
I'd offer that motion.
Support.
Any conversation?
Is that just to have a blanket?
That's what we've done the last few years.
Yeah. And is that just because? I'm curious why the board had that policy, just out of.
Well, it's in your packet, the policy, and it just kind of outlines like what your allowances, your stipend for food.
There's money involved.
It's a budget, it's a budget. So registration fees, mileage, things like that, so.
Rather than doing them each individual time, it's kind of a, like a lot of these things tonight, it's set up for the upcoming year.
Each board member is expected to report back to the board after attending a conference at the district's expense, so. So we would need a motion for this one.
Do you have one?
Yeah, we have a motion.
Stacy and Gordon.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, all in favor? Show of hands, please. Annual fiscal appointments, legal matters. We use Trune Law Firm, P C of Lansing, and our auditor is Straley Lamp &amp; Crenzline, P C. And the recommendation would be a motion to approve Trune Law Firm of Lansing to represent the district in legal matters, and Straley Lamp &amp; Crenzline, P C, as the district's auditing firm for the fiscal year 2023-24.
I would offer that motion.
Support. You have support.
Motion on the floor. Any conversation?
Have we had any other companies interested in this, or?
So we don't put out like requests, you know, for a law firm, so to speak. We do use other law firms. We've had probably a higher-than-normal utilization of other law firms in this past year. But as far as retaining services, we've been satisfied with Trune. They're recognized across the state. And we, again, we haven't put feelers out for others because we haven't seen the need. With the auditor, and Mary can speak a little bit. There's two schools of thought, that you change auditors on a fairly short lifespan, basically. Or you, the auditor works with you for a longer period of time. Pluses and minuses to both. You know, certainly they understand all the nuances of the district, which helps in that audit process. And understanding if a new audit firm comes in, then both they and the district have to learn their practices and, you know, just how they approach all of those things. I think we've been very satisfied with our firm here. And I don't know, how many years now is this? It's been all three for me.
It's been like, it's been like 12 or 15 for me, so however long it's been here.
Yeah.
It's a local firm.
Yeah. So I would recommend both, you know, they provide a good service.
Any further conversation? Okay, hearing none. Show of hands for this motion, please. Show of hands of support. Thank you. Investing school funds. A motion to authorize the utilization of any investment type allowed by the revised school code and state laws for the purpose of investing school funds during the 2023-2024 fiscal year.
I would offer this motion.
Support.
Yearly type of thing. Any further conversation on this one? Okay, hearing none. All in favor? Show of hands, please. Thank you. Moving on, we need to designate depositories for school funds. A motion that the following financial institutions be assigned as depositories for funds for 2023-24. Huntington Bank, Nicolette, Alpena-Alcona Area Credit Union, and Michigan Liquid Asset Fund.
We're not removing anyone from pre, from last fiscal year. We're just continuing. In past years, sometimes they change.
They were, they were. These are the same.
Is Nicolette still Nicolette, or did that, there's still Nicolette?
And I think last year, we did have a couple, well, Nicoli took over, and then there were some other changes, so.
So we need a motion and support on this one?
I'll make the motion.
Support.
Motion and support. Any conversation? All right, hearing none. All in favor? Show of hands. Thank you. Resolution for automated clearinghouse and electronic transactions. A recommendation that the board adopt the preamble and resolution authorizing automated clearinghouse A C H arrangements and electronic transfers. And this is in your packet, the copy of the resolution.
I'd offer that motion.
Second to that.
We have a motion and support. Any conversation or questions?
Didn't we make that, or was that just policy that we made that back in February? Because I remember something along those lines designating Dave as the, for his. It must have been policy that I'm thinking of.
Yeah. So I guess.
There was a policy.
Okay, was that where?
I was just looking to see if it was in here, but it's not.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, and roll call on this one, please, for resolution.
Member Fritz?
Support.
Member Parr?
Aye.
Member Hanson?
Aye.
Member Snow?
Aye.
Member McCarver?
Aye.
And member MyHeart?
Aye.
Up next, letter H, the annual renewal of school of choice 105 and 105C. A recommendation to approve Alpena Public Schools continuing participation in schools of choice 105 and 105C.
And just so you know, 105 is accepting school of choice from districts within the county. We don't have any. And then 105C is the contiguous counties. So last spring, we recorded 67 incoming school of choice through 105C. And so that's the difference between the two.
This is contiguous, not necessarily part of the same E S D. Presqueal County is contiguous, but it, all of it, but it's not, except for the two townships that are actually part of this district.
Well, that's an interesting question, because part of Presqueal is in our district.
Right, but most of it's not.
And I'm thinking of the schools that we receive students from. Roger City was one that came in through 105C. Okay, so contiguous, okay.
I move to approve Alpena Public Schools continuing participation in schools of choice 105 and 105C.
Support.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Show of hands.
Thank you.
Letter I, approval of district memberships for 2023-24. Those five memberships consist of Alpena Chamber of Commerce, $1,600 billed in January of each year. Michigan Association of School Boards, $6,897.28 billed in July each year. Number three, M A S B Legal Fund Trust, $292 billed in July each year. Number four, School Equity Caucus, $1,125 billed in March each year. Number five, Northern Michigan Schools Legislative Association, $991 paid in September each year. We need a motion to approve the five district memberships for the 2023-2024 fiscal year.
Could we get, I mean, since we are looking at money aspects here, a little clarification on some of this? I tried looking some of these up, and it was a little ambiguous. Chamber of Commerce, obviously, that's the local association of school boards, okay. M A S B Legal Fund Trust, the School Equity Caucus was kind of vague to me when I was looking that up. And then the Northern Michigan Schools. So if you could give a little input, Dave, I'd appreciate it to know if this is worth our money.
Do we have a motion on the floor?
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, we don't.
I'll, I'll make the motion, but I have a question, too.
I'll support the motion. Now we can discuss.
I was gonna say, just, you can't, you shouldn't discuss stuff.
So Northern Michigan School Legislative Association is a lobbying group. It consists of Northern Michigan superintendent districts, and they, I meet with them monthly, and they talk about the issues that are facing, we're facing in northern and rural districts. And then they go and work in Lansing to advance those causes. School Equity Caucus is, I forget where it's based out of, but they're focused on equitable funding. And so same thing, they're looking at like the transportation. They had a role in getting additional funding for rural districts through transportation and other issues. You know, equity, it's focused solely on financials.
And they're both, they're both essentially lobbying groups with similar focus.
Yes.
Focuses, okay.
But they don't directly fund, they just lobby the state for funding. Is that what I understand?
I believe so, yes. They are, like, we meet with an individual, and they hear from us, and then they go to Lansing and speak on our behalf. And I only hesitate with the money, like, we're not paying them to pay someone else. Is that what you're asking?
No, no, I guess they're, they're just a go-between where they lobby the state for us. This is basically a membership to their organization.
Correct. Yeah.
And the Northern Michigan Schools Legislative, does that just Northern Lower Peninsula, or does it include the U P as well?
I think there's probably.
I'm just curious.
Yeah. Yeah, I've only met with them virtually. Right. Interesting, and so it's a big group, and I would say there's kind of been people that come and go from lower Michigan and the upper peninsula. As far as membership on a regular basis, I would imagine that there is, but I think they might have another branch of it for the U P. Can't say for sure.
Yeah, I actually thought that was a flip. I thought the school equity was all of us north, including the U P. And Northern Michigan Schools Legislative Association was more of our lower peninsula northern tier. But I could, I could be wrong about that.
I was gonna say, we, in my previous district, we worked with School Equity Caucus.
Okay, then.
And that doesn't mean that that's not correct.
Right, I think it's, I think it's everyone that wants to be a part of it.
Yeah.
Because it's, yeah, I mean, it affects, doesn't matter really where you are regionally. It's simply, what's your distribution from the state relative to others' districts that may be near you, may be very far away? You know, the argument has always been, why is it that some schools are not given the same value for their students as others in different districts? So this organization, that was their purpose, to highlight that and argue for its elimination and equitable distribution of funds.
Do you feel that this is money well spent? You work with them, we don't?
So, yeah, I am definitely more involved with the Northern Michigan Legislative Group, where I actually meet with them. School equity gathers their information in different ways, and so I have not attended their meetings on a regular basis. But when I receive information from them, they are definitely advocating for our causes. And I've seen some positive results from them. But have I sat down and met with them? No, but I do believe we're benefiting from them.
Thank you.
All right, any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. We do have a motion and second on the floor. All in favor? Show of hands. Thank you. Letter J, also in your packet, the schedule for regular board meetings and workshops for the upcoming year. We need a motion to approve the workshop and meeting schedule as presented for the 2023-24 fiscal year.
So moved.
Support.
Yeah, just here.
We all support everybody like that. Playing around things a little better.
Any conversation on this? It looks like we're still traveling for some of the meetings. Looks like we'll hit some of the schools, right? In light of this afternoon's meeting, I was thinking on the way home, maybe that's another avenue to, to have a school visit at the partnership. It might not be a bad one to add to the calendar, since I do think we have ACES and junior high. So maybe at some point, if we end up with extra meeting slots, I don't know if it's something that Jen and Gwen would be interested in hosting, but.
We'll look into that.
I think it would be good for us to hear from them and see that facility and learn more about that. So I think that would be good.
Anything else? Okay, we have a motion on the floor. All in favor? Show of hands. All right, letter K, appoint a board member as the AMA E S D liaison and an alternate liaison. Need a recommendation, recommendation of who to appoint and who as the alternate.
Well, this is where Eric said he'd accept anything, right?
He did.
I have to tell you, the one meeting that I attended this year, that really the only one that you need to attend in this capacity, began at 5:00. I get out of work at 5:00. So I told Lee, I'm gonna leave a few minutes early. I might be a few minutes late. I was there at 5:03. They were waiting for me. They had conducted all of the business except my vote. So within about 30 seconds of me walking in the door, we were done.
I've done that almost the same way.
Yes, I'm happy to do it again, or if someone else would like to, you know, have that brief experience, you're more than welcome.
Really, you just follow, follow our orders.
Exactly.
I move to appoint Stacy Parr as the AMA E S D liaison and Eric Lawson as the alternate liaison.
I support that.
Thank you, A.J. and Eric. Anything else? And thank you, Stacy and Eric Lawson. Okay, all in favor? Show of hands, please.
It's time Eric takes a vacation.
You did what?
Appoint M A S B voting delegates. I will need a motion to appoint the board president, vice president, and treasurer as the M A S B voting delegates.
I'll offer that motion.
All support.
Motion and support. Anything else? All right, all in favor? Show of hands. Thank you. Okay, we made it through all of the organizational meeting type of stuff, and moving on to old business. First up is to approve the 2023-2024 Code of Conduct. We need a motion to approve the 2023-2024 Code of Conduct, and then I think we can. Are you gonna talk about that more, Dave?
Sure. Do you want the motion first, or?
Sure.
Conversation.
I move to approve the 2023-24 Code of Conduct.
Support.
All right, well, I just clicked off my tab. So for the student code of conduct, I found some inconsistencies. We talked about one of the last meetings, not only in the code of conduct, referring to our board policy language, but in the board policy itself, there's some really interesting language. So ultimately, I've boiled it down to, years ago, I'm sorry, I clicked off, so, oh, there it is. Years ago, and when I say years ago, we're probably talking 10-plus years ago. The board was given the choice to have the superintendent or the board of education handle long-term suspensions and expulsions. The way that was originally written, you had the choice of, you know, the board or the superintendent. And then it said, at the request of, at the student's request, the hearing may be private. And it says, select only if hearing by the board. And then you check this next piece, but the board must act publicly. So to go over that again, it says, you know, it can be a private hearing. Essentially, if you've chosen the board, you would include the statement that the board must act publicly. Well, that didn't happen. Both were selected at some point, where it says the superintendent will do this and must act publicly. I don't act publicly on long-term suspensions and expulsions. So I did reach out to Neola and, you know, one, not argument, but one point of view is that when it says the board, many boards interpret that to mean the superintendent. Okay, that doesn't really apply in this. Again, I'm troubled by it saying, our policy says the board must act publicly in this situation. But I think I've tracked it down. It's not a real clean, this is how it happened way back when. But ultimately, I handle those expulsions and long-term hearing suspensions. You would act publicly if you, if someone appealed an expulsion. They can't appeal long-term suspensions, but you would obviously have to act publicly on a decision for an appeal. I have, my previous district, the board did handle expulsions. And what a different, you know, time, because I think in my time there, I saw maybe five expulsion hearings. This year, we had 100 long-term suspension and expulsion hearings in the district. So I think we talked, you don't want to take on that additional responsibility. So all of that being said, I think what our policy needs to, what our code of conduct needs to say is that. Now, let me go back to it. I put it in my notes on the document that I shared with you. Of course, my computer is not cooperating. There it is. Getting there. It's just really slow loading.
Does this go along, then, within our packet, the policy of the due process rights?
Yeah.
Yes.
And I'm sorry, my computer is going so slow. Into page 13. So to the student code of conduct, what I proposed to you was that I remove that sentence that says, at the request of a parent, a student age 18 or older, or an emancipated student, the hearing may be private, but the superintendent must act publicly. Just striking that. It's a private process, if they wish to have it public. I don't know how we would do that, since the superintendent is hearing them. I mean, I would just hold an open meeting. So it, it just doesn't sit right with me. It creates more questions. Taking this statement out aligns with our practice. I handle these hearings. You handle any appeals that may come across, and I don't act publicly on these. So a long way, I mean, it, and then when you go to the policy, you see that there's some issues there. Uh, but, so that is what I'm proposing, the board approve with those changes, taking out that, those two statements on page 17, that the, it may be private if requested, but the board must act publicly. And the superintendent must act publicly. And then, one other change that I put in there too is on page four. As I was going through board policy, we have a relations with parent policy. And so on page four of the code of conduct, it talks about the students have the right responsibility to. Parents have the right responsibility to. Teachers, principals, and school staffs have, staff have the right and responsibility to. And district administrators have the right responsibility. So, I liked the statements that were in your board policy. Um, and it is that the parents, uh, have, the board encourages the parents to support the schools in requiring that children observe all school rules and regulations. And that they accept their own, the parents' responsibility for children's willful in-school behavior. I thought this was a good reminder, um, number one, that it is your board policy. You encourage the, the families to, to do this. Uh, but we did have a number of, uh, parents, and of course, I speak through a biased lens of the people that are coming to me aren't coming to celebrate things. But where they really challenged us and, you know, they called to question our rules and openly told their children in front of me, and we've had it in front of administrators, you don't have to follow that rule, that, you know, just go about that way. So, you know, and then of course, the vast majority of our parents and guardians do. But I just thought this was, as we're looking through and just bringing this up, that parent relation policy was pretty interesting to me and I thought very appropriate for the times that we're seeing right now, so.
And again, we're not, we're not adding anything that isn't already an element of board policy. We're just aligning it with the handbook.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, the code of conduct, okay.
So, eh, eh, again, I don't have a hundred percent clear answer on that superintendent act publicly, board act public, publicly. Part of me does say, do we just want to agree that when it says board, you interpret that as the superintendent? You know, I don't, that was an option. You know, I don't know what that looks like. Because if we get into tweaking the board policies, as we're going to talk about later, I'm not a hundred percent comfortable going down that road. Couple of reasons. Number one, when you start changing new or recommended policies, they avoid the warranty, so to speak. Which, all that means is if we get in trouble for a policy where we've changed it, Neola will say, thank you, have a nice day. If it's exactly as they've presented, then they will stand behind us and basically put in a good word for us that they took their vetted policy in a court of law. And in full disclosure, so, like with the student assessment policy, and I'm rambling all over the place, but hopefully you can stay with me. With the student assessment policy that we're going to approve tonight, I actually went to another Neola district to see what their language was, and it was not the language that Neola had put in front of this board. So clearly, other districts are, you know, customizing, massaging, modifying, whatever you want to call these policies. Could be a slippery slope, you know, if, if we go down with something like discipline. So I guess when we, when we get to the board policy, we can have this conversation. But I think the student code of conduct captures the essence of what we do and our practice of what we do. And that's a separate conversation of, do you want to then alter the, the board policy? And not alter, clean up that language a little bit, so. So I think I've gone through it all. Right now, you have the student code of conduct in front of you for, uh, your consideration with those changes that I've notated.
I do, I'm sorry, were you?
I think so.
I apologize. There's one area that I had a question about, um, and it kind of comes to light, with some recent legislation that's been passed that's still being, I think, going to be hashed out in the courts, having to do with pronoun recognition. It, it just hasn't been quite sorted out because it becomes, well, basically a crime if you, if you harass someone by not using the appropriate pronoun. Now, to what level that is, that's to be debated. I'm not, I'm not getting into that. But I think if, twofold, if we look under the gender identity aspect of this, uh, students have the right to be identified by their name, pronoun, and asserted gender in school records, learning spaces, facilities, and extracurricular activities consistent with the state board of education. I'm not going to touch that because that is, uh, I don't agree with it, but I'm not going to touch that. Uh, my, the responsibility aspect is where I did have question. A parent, guardian, and/or student must communicate with school staff if their school records are not reflective of their name, pronoun, and gender identity. So if there is potential for legal repercussions if you're not utilizing the appropriate pronoun, to whatever level that is, you know, I, I think that that is a responsibility. It should be a requirement, for one, that, that be in the school record, so there's no gray area there. Uh, and two, since we're dealing with minors, um, I don't think that the student should be the one that makes that decision. I think parents should be aware of that. Uh, as a parent, I would like to know if my child is making those, uh, changes to their record. And frankly, I would have the right to know that. And so I think that that, uh, at the very least, we should strike the and/or student and just simply say the parents must communicate that as a matter of record, if that's where we're going, my two cents.
And so just, you know, the, the background on it, um, like we talked about last time, we work to have the student, you know, again, it's age dependent on, you know, who is telling us this is going on. And so we always, first question is, have your parents been informed? We should be working with your parents, caregivers, whoever it is. And that, that worked very well in situations where people were just pushing the boundaries and trying to create, uh, situations. And part of that conversation is, if, if we do go this route, it's going to be reflected in synergy and it's going to be reflected on email communications and all of this. Again, with the idea of, your parents will find out if you officially want us to do this. Uh, we'd rather work with them on the front end. That being said, you know, our, our legal guidance is, if a student says, I'm in danger if my family finds out, case law shows, we will not prevail in that situation where we would be held liable if we said, no, you can't do this, um, and you have to inform your parents.
So there was a, there was actually a court case where a kid wanted to change, said, don't tell the parents. The school said, we're telling your parents, and the kid took it to a court. Is that, is that what I'm understanding for your case law?
In the sixth district court, uh, which is, you know, not binding, but we fall under. So those decisions inform our legal guidance. Could have been variations of how it was handled by the school district. But, you know, the courts have sided on the protection of that student's rights over, um, you know, the district's right to mandate that the parent be informed.
And is there any stipulation on the age? I mean, if we're talking about an 18-year-old, I completely respect that.
Yeah.
If we're talking about an eight-year-old, I, I, I have a problem with that.
So, and I'm just the messenger here, but my best recollection is one of those cases involved a fourth-grade student.
That's troubling, okay.
I'm gonna, I'm just gonna say, paraphrase this and say that it's going to sound eerily similar, and it should. When we were discussing the, um, health clinic and their consent form had no listing whatsoever of exactly what a parent is not allowed to know about their own child's healthcare in the state of Michigan. And I made the argument that the only way I could support this is if this consent form is changed to reflect exactly that. I'm thinking that despite what case law says in defense of fourth graders, at some point, some parent is going to say, whatever it costs, however many courtrooms I have to be in, and drag a district through this mess at great expense. To, to what end? They, they may not be successful, probably won't be, previous case law will hold. But it doesn't mean that it won't happen. And I would strongly encourage us to give some thought to something along the lines of our own version of a consent form that states outright at, you know, enrollment or whenever the case may be, something that we can point to that a parent has looked at and we can say, this is not new. This is something that, that we have, um, you know, put in front of you. You were duly notified, whatever the case may be, um, as a, a mechanism to be somewhat protective of what could come back on us. Because I disagree with it too. However, um, we're not, you know, the case law builds day and day and day in support of just exactly these things at the expense of some parents, if you choose to look at it that way. I, I tend to. However, it doesn't mean that we shouldn't be mindful of that and do what we can to inform parents in advance as best we can of a potential scenario that they could encounter.
I was just gonna say, I, and I understand, there's, there's case law and there's the legal aspects that doesn't make it right. And I have a hard time supporting that out of principle.
Understand, I understand completely. You know, my role specifically is to keep the district out of liability harms way. You know, at the same time, and we could sit here all, nobody has solved this issue, so we're not going to solve it here. I just guess, when you say putting something in front of the, the, the parents, making them aware that this may, I mean, above and beyond the code of cond, or the?
Well, I think, I think we should give it some, some thought. I mean, I, I don't know why we wouldn't inform parents that, you know, your child has the right to do the following. This is one of them.
Yeah.
You know, but on it, but again, I, you know, my, my concern with, with the healthcare scenario was, I could envision myself as a parent finding out about a, a course of treatment or a, a guidance for healthcare that was given to my child that I was legally not entitled to know about. Well, a lot of parents and me prior to doing this role, I didn't know that that was law in the state of Michigan. But I'm glad I know now and I have wanted every parent that thinks, oh, how fabulous that my child can have access to healthcare while at school. It is wonderful. But they need to be fully informed. And I'm just looking at that in this same context. It might be something we want to give some thought to.
Eric, do you still have that pulled up on your computer? Can you read that, that last line again for me?
The responsibility, of course.
Yeah.
Yes. Uh, parents slash guardians and/or student must communicate with school staff if their school records are not reflective of their name, pronoun, and/or gender identity.
I move to amend the motion to approve the 23-24 code of conduct by striking the words and student. Is that the correct?
And/or student.
And/or student from, what section is that for me?
Uh, gender identity. I don't know what page it's on. I apologize.
Gender, the, gender identity section.
I would support that motion.
I don't know that it accomplishes what we would maybe want it to be.
It doesn't have to accomplish what, what we want. I mean, yeah, what would be wanted would end up in court.
Yeah.
Okay? But somewhere, sometimes, you got to put your foot down and say, time to make a stand. And this is one of those times, because if we don't, we just keep getting pushed. A little further, a little harder. And
So I would say that that would violate, um, taking that student out again. That student has rights, whether we agree with them or not. That student has rights. And by doing this, you're taking that out of the code of conduct. And I then think your code of conduct is, um, you know, it violates their rights.
I think that, and again, that kind of goes back to, to my suggestion. I think that we are in a position where we can inform parents as best we can through mechanisms that do not violate rights and hope that they, uh, educate themselves and pay attention and read what may or may not be in front of them at enrollment or whenever the case may be, or when their child wants to receive healthcare at, at the clinic, you know, whatever, whatever the circumstance. You know, I think that that's where we are because there is such, there's so much legal ammunition on the opposite side of, of the argument you're making. And I don't like that either, but unfortunately, it's, it is what it is.
And this is one of those issues to, like, what is going on in Alpena Public Schools versus what we think is going on in Alpena Public Schools? There was a period, it was either last year or two years ago, where, um, at the junior high, kids were just pushing boundaries. And every hour, they wanted to be called by a different name, a different gender, and all of that. We were able to curtail that. There are students that are, you know, going through something I don't understand myself. And so we, you know, are trying to create a welcoming, understanding, equitable environment in this case. It, it's a small percentage, you know? Some people may be thinking, because of what happened at the junior high a couple of years ago, this is going on every day and, you know, kids are just saying, okay, here we go, and that. I want you to understand, it's not happening. It was at a point. But there are students that are legitimately, uh, in this category that I think if we took, they don't have this right to communicate how they are feeling. I can't support that.
We're, we're not saying they don't have the right. We're simply saying that the parent needs to make the school aware. And making policy is not for today. Policy is for the future. And there has been significant change recently. In my profession, I see after they leave the high school, and I, you know, it's not that I'm ignorant to this. In fact, I, I, I interact with this population almost on a daily basis. I'm not belittling that cause. And I'm certainly not even challenging their, their right to do so. What I'm challenging is the fact that as a parent, I want to know what's going on with my child. If they're 18, by all means, make any decision they want. That's fine. And if they're in fourth grade, I, I do have significant issue with it. And so the motion's on the table. Doesn't mean it has to be voted through, but the motion's there. And as a parent, I, I don't want to lose that right. And whether there's case law or there's arguments for it, just because it's case law does not mean it's right. We can see in society, there's a lot of stuff that's become standard. Doesn't not mean it's right. And so, you know, I think we can debate this back and forth, but the, the reality is, we just need to vote on it and see where we stand.
Do you mind if I just add some clarification? Since I'm not going to add any personal opinions, just to add, um, a clarification that we are not allowed to legally change their record. So their student record, their name remains the same. And in synergy, their, their requested name is referred to as nickname. And so the guidance has been made that we need to make every effort to refer to the student for their, their, their chosen gender or their gender identity and their, uh, the name that they would like to be referred to. But we can't physically change a student's record that is not tied to their birth certificate. So there's ways in our student information system that we designate that. So I thought that was just an important piece of information that you needed to know because they, we do require that they bring their birth certificate for enrollment. We cannot change anything that's on that birth certificate unless aligned with their student record in our system. In addition to, and when it's a preferred name, we then, we then make sure that the teacher sees that and it's the first name. sees that and it's the first name that they see, but we don't change the student's record.
So what does it say, student school records here? And if we can't do it, why is that even part of the policy or part of the code of conduct?
Yeah.
It's just here, it's not in line with the school.
It's a nuance. Like, it's a part of their student record then because we add it to the nickname portion, but what is, as far as gender and their legal name, we can't adjust that, but we can add to it. And whatever's in their file, it becomes their student's record. So it is a part of it. It just, we can't, like, remove that, the legal name and add something new. That is not allowed unless you're 18.
So is there a way that this language can be changed from, you know, legal issues, but also helps clarify that, yeah, we're not changing your, but again, you know, the parent is in some way always being notified if they're logging into ParentView or, right? Because it's going to change on there, you always still will see it, so.
About tagging on a special meeting to our August workshop, which is on the 15th or something, to do a couple of other approvals on course catalog.
Twenty-first.
Code of Conduct and that kind of thing. So, twenty-first is good enough this time.
So, question. So the parents have access to this online, either and they can request a hard copy, correct?
As of this moment, no.
I mean, when the student rolls. So everybody, they know where they're at.
Yep.
So if a parent reads this, as a parent, if you, I mean, in the district I was at, the parent had to sign a net sign that they had read the Code of Conduct, or we called it the Code of Behavior. I mean, it says right here, a parent or guardian, so, yeah, couldn't they, like, question, you know, let me know what's going on with my student as a parent? If you, if you, if you go through and read all of this, so, you know, it kind of sort of falls back on the parent to know your, to know your child. Because it says right here, mm, I would, if I was reading this as a parent, parent, guardian, or student, mm, maybe I should talk to my student about this and find out where they're at with all this.
Yeah.
It's just a...
Yep. And we had discussed, you know, having a lot of these sections refer to policy or, you know, and that, so I think there's some things we can do to clean it up and...
And like Stacy said, make parents aware, you need to read the Code of Conduct. Do you need to read it? See what's in there? Make yourself aware of it.
Do parents, I know I should know the answer to this. Do we sign off on the Code of Conduct? I mean, do we...
That you've read it?
That we've read it? Or do we not?
In our paperwork, they sign off that the Code of Conduct has been made available online and they can request a printed copy.
Yep.
So we have, like, our annual assurances that we're required to do, and all in one, what, because we have several that we're required to provide annually. We have one sheet that they sign off on.
So do you know if there's any way, kind of tying back to your idea, if, like, whatever it is that you're signing off on, is there anything to make it, you...
Well...
I click on, I accept all the time on the bottom of the technology agreement.
Right. So is there anything that we can make so it's more clear than parents aren't just blind approving it? I mean, I, I mean, it's not them, but what can you...
I mean, this is, this is already better than, in my opinion, than the health consent form was, which was devoid of so much information about what my child signing up for this healthcare services will mean. This at least is stated and you would have to read it and then you are duly informed. I do think it could be expanded, maybe even by a simple sentence, to reiterate the fact that your child alone may request these changes. Full stop. I mean, you have been notified. Again, as, as much as we could agree or disagree with whether that should occur, we're not going to win that battle. But I just, you know, my hope is that in an era of heightened attention to what we do every two weeks and what goes on in kids' classrooms, I mean, I hope that parents are finding it in their own lives to pay a little more attention. And maybe we can guide them to things that they should be focusing on, if that's a concern of theirs. At the very least, we come back and we are able to say, right here, and if you would like the case law that backs it up, we can give you that too, but this is how it is currently.
If we take that, would you have time to make something like that, an adjustment?
Yeah.
Am I, since I supported, can I make a motion to table?
I was gonna say, I'd make a motion.
But if I support it, can I make a motion? I guess is my question, I don't recall.
Yes, you can. Anybody can.
You have to amend, yeah. Amend your motion, which was the first one, I believe, correct?
No, to table a motion, you can make it anytime.
Okay.
I move to table.
I move to table this motion to readdress at the next workshop.
Okay.
Okay. So motion tabled. Yeah. And then I think we can work on...
So first, you have to take a vote on that.
It needs to be supported for that motion first.
Support, but everything stops until...
So you had, you tabled a motion and Stacy supported that? Okay. Well, we'll continue the conversation really quick before we have a vote on that, do a amendment motion.
Would we have to have a special meeting in order, rather than as part of the workshop?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's going to be, because there was something else that needed to be...
Yeah, course catalogs.
Course catalogs, there's a couple of things that we'll...
And then we just, you know, if any of these policies that we're looking at, you want more time, we throw those on there.
So, yeah, maybe, yeah, Megan, thanks for sharing that. That really does help too. If we can kind of fix that wording a little bit to make it not feel like we're truly altering school records. We're modifying something, but the wording in there with...
It's tricky because all we have is guidance.
Yeah.
Because we don't have the statute that guides it, we have case law that predicts the outcome. And so the guidance, you know, I think we could look at that guidance and try to come up with language that will make every effort, which we do in practice.
Yep.
It's when a student hasn't come out or a student doesn't feel safe where things change.
Yep.
And the guidance is just a stat. You make every effort to balance the student's right with the parent's right to know and, but you take it on a case-by-case basis, because you could be in a situation where you are thinking as a mandated reporter that you might need to file a report. So it's, you never know what's in the, what situation is going to come to you, but I think, like, a general statement saying that will do the stat, balance the parent's right to know with the student's right and, you know, trying to take more general language from the guidance, because that's what it is. But the guidance does state, parent and/or student, or student and/or parent, that and/or is always there because of those case-by-case situations that you can just never predict.
Yeah. I think it's important, like you said, to kind of balance protecting our students, protecting their rights, their safety, but also protecting the rights of parents, especially, yeah, fourth graders, minor, minor children, but...
It's a fine line.
It's a tough situation.
It's a very fine line.
Yeah.
And so along those lines of reading your board policy relations with parents, it's 9250, if you haven't seen it. One of the points is that the board believes the parents have a responsibility to read all communications from the school, signing and returning them promptly when required. Again, this kind of falls under exactly what we're talking about, you know? I do envision maybe some sort of statement from the board about this policy and, you know, just our belief that, because I'm going to go into, one of my priorities, I feel like I'm rambling all over the place, but one of my priorities for the district is to partner with parents. And this relations with parents policy had a big part of that in light of the way everyone's feeling. So, you know, if we come out, I have experienced some people who think that they can, you know, get in between me and the board, and if they just go to the board, then everything can be fixed. But if they know that you fully expect that they and their children follow the rules, then they don't have to have that conversation with me, because they know what your expectation is. I just, and if I say that everyone needs to read everything because we are working on our communication and trying to find the best way to do it, if they know that you expect everyone to do, to read what comes out, that just tightens the administration and the Board of Education. So, don't know where I started with that. There we go. So, yes.
All right. So we do have a motion on the floor to table this Code of Conduct motion. Support. Any further conversation?
Okay. Hearing none, all in favor of tabling this. Show of hands, please. Okay. Thank you.
I'm sorry, Anna, Leslie, did my amendment show up in your notes?
Yes, they are there, yes.
Okay. Just so that when we come back in a month?
Yes. So just to, just to clarify, your amendment, you wanted to strike the words "and/or student."
Correct. Okay. Just, because we didn't, Anna didn't recite that for the, so I didn't know if it got into your...
I'll lay the whole thing out.
Okay.
Okay. Next up, approve the 2023-2024 parent, student-parent handbooks. The Alpena High School handbook, Thunder Bay Junior High handbook, and the elementary handbook.
And my computer is slow to load, but looking at the high school, the last thing we had talked about was removing the acronyms, taking a look at the clubs, which ones are in function and which ones aren't. And so on page...
You're on the high school one, correct?
Yes.
Club, this was on...
Twenty-one.
Page twenty-one.
Page twenty-one is the club and activities.
Yeah. So we did remove a couple. ICE diversity hasn't functioned in a number of years. AHS theater troupe, we now have the maskers, chess club. DARE isn't currently functioning, but there's been interest in the community and I think amongst some board members to explore whether we can do that. So we figured rather than take it out, put it back, take it out, put it back, we'd leave it there. Yes, Future Farmers of America is officially FFA, but we figured we'd just spell it out and include the acronym. Gay Straight Alliance, GSA. Students of, Health Occupation Students of America, HOSA. Distributive Education Clubs of America is DECA. BPA, Business Professionals. Remote Operated Vehicle, ROV. And then the sports that were there, girls swimming, boys swimming, and esports. Right now, we don't have a coach for esports. But again, it was approved in the contract discussions, so we hope to have an esports team up and running. But we cleaned all that up. I think everything else you had seen in that first review, with the exception of, you'll see Mike Bookinger's comment on page thirteen. Students enrolled in an online course during the day are expected to stay on campus and we're crossing out the unless excused by a guardian. I think that became a management issue and we, and sometimes it's in the middle of the day, so they leave, they come back, this sort of thing. We want them, and most, most students have found a space in the high school to do their work with that. So I believe, since we last discussed, those were the changes.
I move to approve the student-parent handbooks for AHS, Thunder Bay Junior High, and the elementary schools for 2023-2024.
Support.
Any further conversation about these handbooks?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I got something.
Okay.
Actually, I like all the changes that have been made that you've addressed there. The one thing that I do have a question about, and it's actually in all three of them, is the note for COVID-19 mitigation strategies. COVID-19 is no longer a national emergency and most of the mitigation strategies that we implemented, a lot of the science behind that has been proven that it did not truly do what we thought it to be. And since there, we don't have a section in here for influenza or the common cold, I would really like to see that whole section just gone.
Well, COVID has no rights, so...
So I might win this one?
Yes. I don't see a problem with that. Is it just the one?
It's on all three.
It's on all of them, and I think it's there.
I'm sorry, but it's just on page one.
One. Yeah, right there.
Yes.
And I think we have policy that reflects illnesses and...
Communicable diseases.
Communicable diseases. So our, our policies cover this type of thing that we don't need to be.
There is some policy related to COVID in there that we do need to readdress because the science doesn't support it. But we can get to that later. Right now, I'd just like to see that gone.
Why don't you go ahead and amend the motion then?
That was added when we had no idea what was coming next week. And so we added it, I can't remember, we were right in the middle of it. So it was probably something we could just pass over and show it to the board, so...
You're okay with...
Good if we get rid of it?
You're okay with getting rid of it? Okay.
Okay. I move to amend all three of the handbooks to eliminate the note section related to COVID-19 mitigation strategies.
Support.
I feel like we have a small win.
So that motion is just to amend those three handbooks.
To remove that section.
Yes. We have a motion on the floor. Any further discussion regarding removing the mitigation strategies portion of the handbook?
Clarify, that was page one?
It was, yes. I'm not sure what is in the other ones.
Yeah, it's in the welcome section, at least of the high school.
I'll just put it in notes, so we...
Okay.
I'm sorry, did you clarify that? Are we, are we approving the handbooks with that change?
This motion, this motion was just to modify it.
First, you gotta vote on the amendment and then the whole get and kaboodle.
And it looks like, yes, it's under the welcome section on the...
The note section.
Yeah, the Thunder Bay Junior High one as well.
Got it.
Okay. All right. So we have motion on the floor, support to change the handbook for that section. All in favor? Show of hands.
Do we have a second?
Yes, Stacy seconded that one.
Okay. Okay. Now we would need a motion to...
No, you have the motion. So...
We had a motion to approve it?
To amend the handbook.
No, you...
There was originally a motion for the handbook to be approved. I voted to amend it, which approved. Now we go back to the amended original one.
So the motion should state, I, I, I'm sorry, the motion should state the "as amended."
Mm-hmm. As amended, I'll add those words.
And was there support for that? Or just the motion?
Yes, the motion was supported because it couldn't be talked about until...
True. Gordon supported it.
Gordon supported it?
Okay.
Okay, yeah.
So we'll add the words at the end, "as amended."
As amended, yep.
Technically, you're supposed to say it all "as amended," so that discussion, you know, but...
Okay. Any further conversation? Okay. Hearing none, show of hands in support to approve the handbooks as amended. Okay. Thank you. All right. Second reading of policies. Policy 2623, student assessment.
And on this one, it was just that clarifying sentence in the first, not the first paragraph, but, let's see.
Section A, the five and eight?
Yes. Other than that, it was as originally presented.
Okay. You have that policy in front of you, so we would need a motion to approve policy 2623 as presented.
I move to approve policy 2623 as presented.
Support. Sorry. It's okay.
Any further conversation? Okay. Hearing none. Show of hands to approve this policy.
Okay.
Up next, policy 9700.01, advertising and commercial activities.
And so, yeah, it's the first reading at the last meeting. And so this is just the second reading.
We would need a motion to approve policy 9700.01 as presented.
I make the motion to approve policy 9700.1 as amended.
Support.
That's as presented.
Yep.
As presented.
As presented?
Yes. I'll get it right eventually.
Uh, who supported?
Gordon.
Okay.
Okay, any further conversation on this motion, on this policy? Okay, hearing none, a show of hands in support of that motion? On up next, new business. First reading of board policy five-six-one-one, due process rights.
So this is, it has that language in there, and you can really see it in section B, students subject to long-term suspension and expulsion. If you look, uh, third line from the bottom of that paragraph, you can actually see how superintendent board is combined there. Superintendent board must act publicly. And so that's a result of when the original changes were presented, they took a little of this and a little of that, and they should have taken all of this and none of that. And it's been there since, uh, you know, I don't know when that choice was made. Could have been as far back as two thousand, possibly. The practice is the superintendent handles these. So our handbook, the Student Code of Conduct, is currently in line with, um, this policy, I believe. Because this policy has more flexibility if we read both the superintendent and the board can do this. To me, the sticking point is the act publicly. I don't act publicly in this situation.
No.
So technically, that's a violation of board policy?
Is the thought to strike at the student's request, the hearing may be private, but the superintendent board must act publicly, strike that sentence.
Correct.
The whole thing, the whole sentence?
Yeah, my, my one concern was if we take out the, even the idea that it can be private, people may think it's public. It's, it's not, so I don't want to, you know, make them worry that it's, it's public. So if you have a thought about that, where we leave, you know,
I think that.
I don't know how you say, at the student's request, it can be private, but it's private anyway.
Right, it's silly, yeah, and you're right, it leaves the impression that this is something that would be conducted in it tonight.
Yeah.
And no, that would not be the case, so I don't have a problem with that.
Yeah.
And if you're all in agreement that our code of conduct isn't in, and we're doing the handbook, I mean, we can, I can reach out for further guidance on this beyond Neola, and you could technically approve it again on the twenty-first, and I could have it a little bit more delineated. Or I am comfortable removing that sentence, you know. So why don't we just move it to the August workshop now that you've heard my explanation? And aren't you grateful that I didn't put that in? I think I did, sorry, in writing. I mean, you, you understand it, so I think if I presented, here's specifically what I'd like to do, and vetted a little bit more, I believe you would be a little more comfortable in making that decision, and it's not something that has to be made tonight.
Yeah, this was just the first reading.
It is, yeah.
We could do a first and a second reading at the next meeting if we needed it, it's okay.
And then we have the regular meeting too on the twenty-eighth, so we have plenty of time for me to just be more comfortable with it. It's just clunky.
Yeah. Okay, so we will table that.
Okay.
Food service pizza bid. We have a motion to award the pizza bid to B.C. Pizza at seven dollars per pizza for the 2023-2024 school year. You have the bid results in front of you in your packet.
Ooh, a taste testing panel.
I do have to make a reference to Kurt brings props when he comes to our meetings. We should have had Nick here with props for this one.
I don't think we can vote on anything till we know for sure.
I hate it, I'm here, I'm alive. You guys came for the taste test.
And we did have students as part of the panel as well.
Oh, how cool.
More students than.
More students, we were the only adults in the room.
And they're all in agreement as well?
We don't know.
We don't know, it was already, we just filled out these little things. We had to put like a little A on ours because it signifies we're an adult. I want to know, is that the first one, Gordon? Or is that the second one, or is that the third one? Because I know which one I like the best.
Kurt wasn't there?
Yeah, I was just saying, Kurt always brings like a rusty pipe or something. Oh, yeah?
Yes.
Well, great.
Okay.
All right, well, this is an easy one, then.
And this is the first year, then, that we've used B.C., is that correct?
Yes.
Yep, but they were also the, um, the low bidder, so low bidder and the taste test winner, is that sounds like, so.
Where's their, do they have a place in Alpena?
B.C.? Oh, yeah, it's on the, um, twenty-three North.
The old Purvance.
Yeah, the old Purvance.
Oh.
Yeah.
Okay.
Gotcha.
Now I'm up to speed.
Gas station.
I don't go out that way much.
Well, I, I move to award the pizza bid to B.C. Pizza at seven dollars per pizza for the twenty-three-twenty-four school year.
Perfect, support.
Okay, any further pizza conversation?
So much more fun.
Uh, show of hands in support of the motion to award the pizza bid to B.C. Pizza.
Okay, got it.
Thank you for those who taste tested. Next up, the food service milk bid recommendation. A motion to award the milk bid to Cedar Crest Dairy based on both pricing and general specs for the twenty-two-three-2024 school year. You've got that bid in front of you as well, or the bid results. We're slightly the lowest bidder out of the two.
For a motion to award the milk bid to Cedar Crest Dairy based on pricing and specs for the twenty-three-twenty-four school year.
Support.
Okay, we have motions for, any further conversations? Okay, hearing none, all in favor, show of hands? Next up, general construction manager for phase-two bond project consideration. We have a recommendation to authorize the superintendent or his designee to take such steps as are necessary to have Clark Construction provide services as the district's sole construction manager on the remainder of the current school bond construction program, including but not limited to negotiating, modifying, and entering into any related agreement, agreements, amendment, amendments, or termination of existing agreement or agreements in the district's best interests and subject to review by legal counsel. Do we have anyone that wants to offer that motion and support, please?
I will offer that motion.
Support.
Okay, any further conversation?
Is this just for the high school, the remaining, so the other construction personnel will still finish what we have right now?
Yes.
Okay.
That is part of the reason you're authorizing me to make this transition, rather than you looking line by line by line, because yes, we absolutely want them to finish out, and then we move forward on this final phase, which is in the design process.
Okay, so while guests will finish what, the construction that they were hired to do?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Does the wording of this in any way, um, take away board requirement for certain aspects? And give it to you instead of the board, or I guess I'm?
Yeah, so I guess it came from Trune Law, who's been advising us on this whole process. And I guess, do you want to speak to the, can you speak to the nuances of we're basically shifting the contract as it exists over? I think if there were going to be significant changes, then there might be call for more of a board review of it. I think, is that essentially where we're at?
Yeah, um, so the requirements are, they were bid out when it was first, you know, the bond first before the body of it started. So Clark was also a bidder at that time. Then when we went out for a second bid on general fund and Usher funds, Clark and Logue's and Spence Brothers all responded. So Clark has responded twice to the bidding, and they negotiated a lower fee now with this change in construction management.
Sure, that wasn't actually my question, but you know, I agree, I think, you know, I think we need to move forward that. That's just the wording of this puts it.
Right, are you still going to be coming to us for, like, when?
Because any of the change requests, this basically says that whoever the designees can make those decisions, when actually those should come to the board for approval, should they not?
Yes, I think.
Yeah, that was my question.
And I think that's what I thought you were asking.
This isn't a change event?
No, no, but, but he's saying, next year, when a change event comes, am I just going to approve it? The answer is no.
Right, which is what I understood, it's just the wording of this kind of makes it seem that.
Yeah, so.
Looking back, if I remember correctly, before we even started, it was early, early on in the design phase, Dr. John was still here, he was, I don't know if it was even out, it might have been out, he was potentially reading. The board, the board at that time acted separately with many other bond contracts, if I recall correctly, saying that the district superintendent, any change event over ten thousand dollars, would take that to the board. And the board, the board voted on that, approving APS superintendent, whatever it may be, the authority to approve that, so I believe that was a whole separate
Right, and it's.
versus the contract with the construction manager.
Precisely, I, I think just, you know, the question is that with the recommendation stated as it is right now, as long as that, as those previous established protocols are not made null and void because of this, then we're fine to move forward. If, if there's a chance of that happening, then we may want to, you know, just amend the recommendation to include something along the lines of, you know, previous board, uh, protocols with regard to the, the bond initiatives stand, you know, in, are not altered because of this, I don't know how we would say it, but as long as that's not
Right, I think.
a possibility, that was what you were asking.
That's correct.
It looks like we're just authorizing the superintendent. Yeah, authorizing the superintendent to take whatever steps necessary to have Clark Construction provide services as the sole construction manager, but not any of the actual construction.
And it does say.
Here's an option, subject to review by legal counsel and/or the board, and then there's that and/or again. But then, you know what I mean, then things are, I think that would even be sufficient.
Yeah.
And that way, what's been previously agreed upon stands.
Reiterated.
Mm-hmm.
I would, I would say the way it's written, um, you're authorizing the superintendent to take steps necessary to, uh, have Clark provide the services, including but not limiting to negotiating, modifying, or entering into any related agreements. And is that, like, so to me, related agreement is a contract with them, not necessarily a change event. Amendments, I guess, yeah, you could, I would envision amendments to a contract, not necessarily, or terminating the existing. It all talks about the, the agreements there, which to me means contract.
So it's all in regards to their services, and their services are not carrying out the change orders. They're just the middleman for the change orders. Their services are the construction management services, and that's all in regards to, is the services.
Okay.
Do you see an issue with adding and/or the board? I mean, I understand your point.
Yeah, I certainly don't expect you to bring everything to the board. I just want to make sure that when changing this, we don't make something null and void that was already agreed upon.
Yeah.
That was my only question.
I, I seriously don't believe that it does, but if, I mean, if that's what you guys want to do, is add and/or the board, or, you know, that's fine. The other thing still stays in place because that's in regards to change orders, and this is in regards to services of Clark Construction.
Okay.
So they're, they are separate items.
Okay.
I'm comfortable with that, I just wanted some clarification.
Thank you for clarifying. Okay, any, um, we do have a, a motion on the floor, any further conversation? Okay, hearing none, um, all in support of this motion, show of hands, please? Okay, thank you. Up next, number five, APS blinds bid consideration, also in your packet. We have a motion to award the APS district-wide blinds bid totaling two-hundred-and-seven thousand dollars, nine hundred, two-hundred-and-seven, nine-hundred-and-fifty-one thousand dollars and one cent, uh, to, and it lists all the different companies and what buildings they will be working in. Bearman and Associates at Alpena High School for seventy-seven thousand nine hundred and one. Creative Windows at Besse for twenty-six thousand two hundred. Creative Windows also at Ella White, twenty-seven thousand four hundred and twenty-six. Creative Windows at Hinks, twelve thousand four hundred dollars. Creative Windows at Lincoln, eleven thousand two hundred. Creative Windows at Sanborn, eight thousand four hundred. McDonald Cabinetry at Thunder Bay Junior High, thirty-six thousand four hundred and seventy-six and thirty-eight cents. McDonald Cabinetry at Wilson, seven thousand nine hundred and forty-seven dollars and sixty-three cents.
So moved.
Support.
And I would just add, remind that this has two purposes, school safety, and it also has, uh, facilities of maintenance updating. Blinds are in bad shape, but part of our safety protocols are to be able to cover the windows in certain situations, and this would make that possible.
Perfect. Any further conversation? Is this coming, what funding is this coming out of? Do you want to speak on that, Mary, in case anyone is curious about that?
School safety grant.
Okay, just a safety grant.
What's the timeline for this? How soon will these blinds be installed, or they?
So, all right, so the safety grant ends September thirtieth, which is, which is fairly quick, so we went through facilities.
Sure, come on.
Maybe, just, I think it'll pick you up better on the microphone, yep.
Just love talking with everyone. So September thirtieth is the deadline for the school safety grant for this round, so the district, the facilities group, we went through and personally measured each window opening in the district minus Sunset and Central Office. And if you saw the RFP out, it was like sixty pages long. There was a massive, we wrote a system down, it went fairly quick, it went quicker than one would think. So we, we wanted to put that groundwork in place, so, and it was there, cotton dry, apples to apples for all bidders. So, and then looking at the bid here, you see we split it up, we had them bid a price per building, and a base price of material only with an alternate price of installation. So in order to help meet deadlines, because we're told from three of these different companies that lead times are like three to four weeks. And then once, once they get them, they can move quickly to install them, which installation, at that point, is going to have to happen weekends before school or after hours, so that was all in the contract, they're, they're ready to do that. Facilities, the facilities team, we're done all the old blinds, we offered that up to do it ourselves. We might have to throw in a couple hours overtime for custodian to come in and pop all the blinds out and dispose of them. Not a big deal, it was in the best interest of the district. So actually, the, the high school, and splitting it three different ways, we're going to tackle the high school ourselves. We selected Bearman Associates for materials only, not installation. And the other two vendors that were selected are supply and install. So aiming to, to meet the aggressive timeline of September thirtieth by the grant, splitting it up between the three entities for installation, we, we believe we can meet that goal.
Okay.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Another good part of splitting it up is we were able to, you know, Bearman Associates, or I'm sorry, Creative Windows was the apparent low bidder. If you add them all up, however, if you see, they weren't necessarily the low bid on all buildings. So McDonald Cabinetry, Sue McDonald here in town, we've worked with her in the past, local company. They were selected, they were apparent low bidder. We maximized the district's funds. If we would have chose Creative Windows, it would have been something like two-hundred-and-nineteen thousand dollars total with us doing the install, and breaking it up a little bit, that's where it came to. to the $207,000, so. The plan with these remaining funds for the safety grant is to upgrade doors, so that's a few more door hardware packages that we can pick up, so.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, we have motion on the floor. Any further conversation? Okay, do you mind doing a roll call on this one, just for the...
Yes.
High dollar amount, thank you.
Yes. Member Parr.
Aye.
Member Hanson.
Aye.
Member Snow.
Aye.
Member MacArthur.
Aye.
Member Fritz.
Aye.
Member Meinhardt.
Up next, number six, Alpena High School CTE Ramp Project Bid Consideration, a motion to award the following AHS CTE Ramp Project bids totaling $184,761,025. Two, and we've got four here, we've got General Trades going, Clark Construction for $80,700, Painting going to Denny's Painting, $7,792, Plumbing to Wyancoff Plumbing and Heating, $87,741, and Acoustical to John's Electric for $8,528.25.
For a motion to award the following AHS CT Ramp Project bids totaling $184,761,025 to Clark Construction, Denny's Painting, Wyancoff Plumbing and Heating, and John's Electric.
Clarify, just for anyone else listening, where the general fund, what funds that this is coming out of possibly, and why we're doing this project.
So, this is a 88 issue, it came up in our syllabus inspection, and then there's $75,000 set aside for each ramp in the long-range maintenance, the other $34,000 just to come on with the general fund budget.
Thank you. Anything further? All right, hearing none, a roll call on this one as well, please, Leslie.
Number Hanson.
Aye.
Member Snow.
Aye.
Member MacArthur.
Aye.
Member Fritz.
Aye.
Member Parr.
Aye.
Member Meinhardt.
Aye.
Good evening. We have seven new hires this month for professional staff. We have Kirsten Genshaw, third grade teacher, Sanborn Elementary School, Courtney Ganya, English PBL teacher for Thunder Bay Junior High School, Kristen Hartman, Spanish teacher, Alpena High School, Barbara Mowbray, first grade teacher, Lincoln Elementary School. For support staff, we have Melissa Rondo, instructional assistant, building to be determined, Blake Bartlett, network and security engineer, so IT, for Alpena Public Schools, Rebecca Hayes, excuse me, Rebecca Keys, cafeteria aide, Alpena High School. For resignations, we have Maya Proul, fifth grade teacher, Lincoln Elementary School, Joseph Bastow, English teacher, Alpena High School, Elena Nugent, social studies teacher, Thunder Bay Junior High, Gloria Taylor, custodian, Sanborn and Wilson Elementary Schools, Angie Cagna, public accountant, Alpena Public Schools, Kristy Schultz, English teacher, Alpena High School, Carrie Manning, instructional assistant, Ella White Elementary. For retirees, we have Dawn Diamond Gentry, office assistant, Thunder Bay Junior High with 13 years of service. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we need a motion to approve the hiring of the following new certified staff after completion of proper certification, testing, and other HR requirements.
So moved. Support.
All in favor, show of hands, please. Thank you. Thank you. We have some gifts packed, I'll read these for Eric since he's not here. Patch Pals from Hiawatha, Iowa donated two eye patches for the McKinney Vento student with the polypia and focusing difficulty, valued at $17.90. United Way of Northeast Michigan donated two cases of assorted cliff bars for the summer school recovery program, valued at $553, and an anonymous donation of a large box of school supplies to Alpena High School, valued at $150. Not on here, but I would make a motion to accept these donations and thank them with a letter of gratitude. Any further conversation? All in favor, show of hands.
Thank you.
We're at the second opportunity for citizens and delegations to address the board. Okay, seeing no one. Information and proposals, letters and communications. Nothing. Reports and information from superintendent and staff.
All right, so first off, congratulations to our re-elected officers. Thank you, I think that speaks volumes to the board and the honest and frank conversations that we're having, and how we're working together as a team here, so congratulations, and look forward to continuing to work with you in, in all of your roles. I just jotted down here as I was rubbing my head because of the headache of all the things that go on during the summer, get constantly asked, get asked constantly. Do you have the summers off? Quiet, must be pretty...
No.
No, we are all working very hard, as you know. You're closing out one school year and you're opening up the school year, the new school year, and you're managing construction work and everything else that goes on, pizza bids and things like that. So, yeah, our staff is hard at work. I actually don't have the day numbers till our staff returns, teachers, but administrators have started returning, and others return. Tomorrow's August 1st, and so we are feeling the pressure of getting the year ready, and everything put in place, and all our processes worked out. So, it's, it's been a great summer, it's been a busy summer, stressful summer, but we're moving forward, so yes, we do work during the summer. Looking towards 23-24, the board and I have been talking about goals and, you know, some sort of vision and where we're heading, and I just want to throw out, you know, I'm kind of focusing on six priorities, and then we will talk about this as we go into, you know, closed sessions for evaluation and setting goals and those kind of things, but really comes down to, the first one is our top priority, school safety, you know, but then raising academic achievement. We've had conversations about, you know, during the pandemic, it was what it was, and we're now moving away from that, and our academic achievement seems not to be heading in the right direction, and we need to address that as a district. So, that is interchangeable with my number one priority, but school safety, you know, always needs to be that top priority, raising academic achievement. District wellness goes along with that, I think, you know, we've put some pieces in place, people are experiencing life in ways they've never experienced before. We don't know what the impact of the last three, four, or five years has been, but we're seeing behaviors that we've never seen before to a level we've never seen before, and we need to address that and help our students, but also help our staff who are experiencing issues, so I just want to really focus on district wellness. Partnering with parents, as I said, you know, that is our key to success. And just by the way, board policy defines the word parent as guardian, custodial agent, and all of that, so that's one of those words where it specifically says, we're talking about everyone when we say parents. But, you know, that's critical to our success. We want to, and we do partner with our parents, and without our parents, you know, our job is that much more difficult. Of course, the safe, warm, dry bond, finishing that out with our largest building coming up, we're in that design phase, and then I just threw one out, you know, looking towards the future, you know, trying to see where we're going and anticipate, and be ready for whatever comes forward. So, those are my, you know, that's how I'm gathering my thoughts, and we've had conversations with the administrative team about what all of those look like in the district, and you'll be hearing more about that going forward. And my last, you know, again, I appreciate your support, you know, Mary, Kurt, Simon, Adam, and everyone working through the safe, warm, dry bond, you know, we, we have high standards here, and when those high standards aren't met, I'm grateful that the board has supported me in this process and supported our team. I believe this transition is the right one, I wish everyone well, but we have those expectations, and we believe that this course of action that you voted today will help us achieve those high expectations. And that's my report.
How are things looking at Besse?
So, I just, I just flew into town, and boy, I'm tired. I was there before I left, but...
I like to use the term as expected, and people look at me different ways. It's going to work out fine, the unit vents, everything like that are in place, a lot of the cabinetry has been placed on the exterior walls, the flooring crews are at Lincoln this week, they still have some stuff to do at Thunder Bay, I hope we see them working seven days a week from, from here on out. Would have been nice if they would have worked last weekend, but the parking lots come together, we have water back turned on back there at Besse and stuff like that, so I'm hoping we see some saves and some curve going in, the paper is soon behind that.
I will throw it out again, you know, I wasn't here last week, so I got to get out some of the buildings, if you want to join me, you know, several have joined me. I will throw out some times that are available on my calendar, but if you have some times after hours, so to speak, it'd actually be easier to go in after hours, you know, so if you want midnight or whatever, whatever works for you, for your schedule. It's very important for you to go in and see that it is moving forward, thanks to the APS team here driving that ship, but yeah, it's always good to walk through and see what, what it actually looks like, so.
Great.
We're actually throwing a few of APS's paint crews out in the rooms, areas that weren't going to be painted, but the rooms are cleaned out to the extent, but they probably won't be for another, who knows how long, so there's, there's opportunity for that, and things are at a stage enough in some of the rooms to, to let that happen.
Kurt, one quick question, are those units in at Hinks?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it's my understanding they fired the boilers up day, I was in meetings most of the day, but they fired up the boilers, and it's a few things that we, maybe not even from their end, but, you know, problems and things like that, that's, that's to be understood, so they were addressing those leads. We have those same issues, the turning on of boilers, the turning off of boilers, turning on, turning off, is something from a facility standpoint that we dread, everything expands and shrinks.
Uh-huh. Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, anything else from the board?
I had a question. We had talked, I don't know, I think it was at our last meeting, or maybe it was the one before that, are we going to continue to have two sections for citizens to address? Not one?
Yep, we just discussed that again today.
Okay.
What is the will of the board? We are required to have an opportunity for citizens to speak before any action item, there is no requirement afterwards. I don't know when that became a practice in Alpena, my guess is it's been there, it's been there for at least three years, that there's that second section.
Longer than that. And we removed it from our workshops, but we really hadn't addressed the regular meetings. Okay, that must have been what I was, what I was remembering then. That was my interpretation.
So, it makes sense, you know, there is the argument that something comes up in that, that people want to comment on, but as far as public comments and action items, it only has to be before the beginning.
I'm fine with, with keeping it as we've done, but I was just curious, because I didn't quite catch that we were just making the change to the one, so that's fine.
I like getting yelled at twice.
Mm-hmm. Isn't it fun?
Well, we'll see what we can...
I could see, you know, having something at the end, I mean, we're required to have it at the beginning, which I understand that too, but I really do see a lot of folks that address us after they have heard something that evening that they would like to comment on, and I don't think we should remove that option entirely, you know, to sit there and have to wait another 14 days before you could bring up again what just occurred 20 minutes ago, seems a little silly to me.
Yeah, especially schedules, if the first one is roughly at 5:35, you know, it can be hard for people to make it right at 5:30, so.
That's a good point, too. Okay, I just, it was just a question, thank you.
Anything further? Okay, if not, moving on, advanced planning, August 21st, board workshop 5:30 here at the boardroom. August 17th and 18th is the new teacher orientation, August 21st, teacher opening day, August 28th, first day for students, also the 28th would be our regular board meeting here at the boardroom, September 18th, new hire reception at Central Office, September 18th is our monthly board workshop here, so if I'm reading that right, those will kind of back up to each other, which is nice. September 25th is the regular board meeting at 5:30 at the high school with Aces presenting. Nothing else, we will adjourn. Thank you.
All right. Get down, rest in peace.